Good evening. I call this December 8th, 2020 meeting of the Morrisville Town Council to order. Thank you to those watching via livestream and those who are watching our recording of this meeting. To maintain the safety of town residents, staff, and the town council while following guidelines related to social distancing and limited public gatherings, this meeting is being facilitated electronically via Teams meeting. There are four council members present tonight in council chambers and three participating remotely from home to ensure that proper distancing and room capacity directives are followed. All council members will be able to fully participate in this evening's work. Active citizen participation is always important to town council. Public comments were accepted from 9:00 a.m. through 3:00 p.m. today. In-person public comments will be accepted during this meeting with one speaker allowed in council chambers at a time. This meeting is being streamed on the Town of Morrisville Facebook page, and December 11th, a video of this meeting will be uploaded to www.townofmorrisville.org/government/live-video. A link to this page will also be placed on the Town of Morrisville social media pages. Please visit www.townofmorrisville.org for updates regarding future town council meetings, or feel free to email townclerk@townofmorrisville.org with any questions. Eric Smith, our town clerk, will conduct a roll call of all council members.
Mayor Colley?
Present.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Present.
Councilmember Fender?
Present.
Councilmember Garamella?
Present.
Councilmember Rao?
Present.
Councilmember Robati?
Present.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Present.
All council is present.
Thank you, sir. I will now provide the indication. As we end one year and prepare to begin another, I would like to share two short quotes about kindness. "Simple kindness may be the most vital key in the riddle of how human beings can live with each other in peace and care properly for this planet we all share." That was by Bo Lousoff. The second quote is by Scott Adams. "Remember, there's no such thing as a small act of kindness. Every act creates a ripple with no logical end." Thank you in advance for being kind this holiday season and beyond. All who are able, please stand and join in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
Aye.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America and to the republic of justice for all.
Prior to further action, I will ask if there is a motion and a second to invoke Rule 19.
So moved. I move that we invoke Rule 19.
I have a motion from Councilmember Rao.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Fender. Town Clerk Smith will now facilitate our roll call vote.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
I'm sorry, aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to invoke Rule 19 passes unanimously.
Thank you, sir. Before we adopt tonight's agenda, Town Council policy is to review and ensure there are no conflicts of interest or appearance of conflict of interest with any items on the agenda. Do any council members have any such conflict?
None.
Okay. Seeing or hearing none, is there a motion and a second to adopt this evening's agenda?
A move that we adopt this evening's agenda.
A motion from Councilmember Rao?
I'll second.
Second from Mayor Protem Johnson. Town Clerk Smith will now facilitate our roll call vote.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to adopt the agenda passes unanimously.
Thank you. There are two items on the consent agenda this evening: a resolution appointing the 2020 Planning and Zoning Board Chair and Vice Chair, and a resolution to unseal closed session minutes. Do any council members wish to remove either of these? Seeing none, is there a motion and a second to adopt tonight's consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
A motion from Mayor Protem Johnson. And I will second it. Town Clerk Smith will now facilitate our roll call vote.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to adopt the consent agenda passes unanimously.
Thank you. There is one administrative report on tonight's agenda: a Triangle grading and paving versus Town of Morrisville settlement update. Administrative reports are provided as information-only items unless council has any questions. Are there any questions on this item? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to item number 10, presentations. There is one presentation tonight on tonight's agenda: the presentation of the Morrisville Environment and Stormwater Committee poster contest winner, Giselle Rodriguez, Public Works Director, will make the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm here on behalf of the Morrisville Environmental and Stormwater Committee. Is this on? Okay. Better?
Mask.
Perfect.
Sorry.
Thank you. For 15 years, the Morrisville Environmental and Stormwater Committee has celebrated a poster contest with the intention of promoting education on certain messages in sustainability. This year, they have chosen the topic of how can I live sustainably during this COVID pandemic? And the theme is distributed to the different schools so that they are able to incorporate that in their lessons that are either on the arts class, science class, or incorporated within the curriculum. This year, it was a little different with the fact that a lot are learning from home. So the theme this year promoted a lot of conversation at home, which is great because it was a sustainability topic. And we could see from the different posters that were submitted that there was some great conversation going on at home. We are very proud of all the submitters that were received. We had 19 entries in total, from grades from kindergarten to fifth grade. We had students submitting from Morrisville Elementary, Cedar Fork Elementary, Norwood Elementary, Parkside Elementary, and Fuller Elementary. Students that can't submit are those that either attend school in Morrisville or that they live in Morrisville. I have here tonight Janet Bunker. She is one of the members of the committee, and she actually will be holding up the poster so you can see the winning poster. So we select first, second, and third place from each grade. Each poster and each winner will be recognized on the website and on social media, so you have the opportunity to see those in those avenues. Please go on the website and see them. They are amazing posters. They all did an amazing job. So we would like tonight to recognize our grand prize winner, who receives a certificate, a ribbon, a reusable water bottle, and a pass to the Aquatic Center, and their poster made into a banner that will be displayed along Town Hall Drive next year when we post them on again. And our grand prize winner is Daylin Rego, third grade from Cedar Fork Elementary School. We would like to welcome her to come get her prize, and we would like to give her a round of applause. She indeed did a great job, and we're very proud of her. Thank you for your participation.
Thank you very much. It's a great-looking poster, and because of social distancing, we're gonna just let you grab that, and we really appreciate your coming. I see you have your parents with you as well. We really appreciate everyone's participation in this every year. It's very meaningful to us. We have young scientists on the way and young artists. We really appreciate it. Thank you very much, Carolyn. Congratulations. At this time, Town Clerk Smith will present any public comments received, and we'll have public comments from anyone who has signed up. Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir. There were seven total comments received. One of the submitters of public comments is in person to provide her comments, so I'll be reading the six remaining comments. The first comment is from Steve Lauderdale, 2104 Glade Valley Lane. Town Council, good evening. Tonight is your opportunity to confirm that you understand that public school capacity is one of the top concerns of Morrisville residents. Please consider that as you continue your work on Agenda Item 12(c), Resolution approving the 2021-2022 Legislative Advocacy Agenda and Related Advocacy Goals. Thank you for your attention. The next comment is from Donna Constanti, 2108 Glade Valley Lane, Morrisville, North Carolina. Dear Town Council, I hope you will take the time tonight to understand how there are many Morrisville residents who consider that public school capacity is a top concern. We are excited over the progress made to date and are looking for things to continue and afford motion to support public school options that are proximate to Morrisville residents. I am particularly concerned about the K-3 class size mandate that was passed several years ago but was unfunded. This has led to a strong focus on elementary school construction in order to meet capacity requirements, but has not led to a focus on where those kids go after the third grade, and has led to the loss of many classrooms across Wake County in order to fulfill the mandate. I live in Kits Creek, and two of the three base schools assigned are capped. This means residents will have to go further and further away from home. Today, I ask you to accept the unanimous resolution approved by the Morrisville Public Education Advisory Committee to remove the mandate for K-3 class size. This would show that Morrisville is committed to advocate for public schools and work with the Wake County Public School System and the Wake County Board of Education. Please consider this feedback as you continue your work on Agenda Item 12(c), Resolution approving the 2021-2022 Legislative Advocacy Agenda and Related Advocacy Goals, particularly removing the K-3 class size mandate for public school systems. The K-3 class size mandate resulted in the loss of hundreds of classrooms in Wake County and thereby resulted in capped schools and assignment of students to more distant schools. This is also a chance to accept the recommendation from the unanimous resolution approved by the Morrisville Public Education Advisory Committee. Finally, and more importantly, this is a chance for the Town Council to send a clear message to the Wake County Public School System and the Wake County Board of Education that the Town Council is sincere about Morrisville's strategic plan to develop an advocacy plan to address public education needs. The second comment is from Donna Constanti, 2108 Glade Valley Lane, Morrisville, North Carolina. Dear Town Council, I hope you will take the time tonight to understand how there are many Morrisville residents who consider that public school capacity is a top concern. We are excited over the progress made to date and are looking for things to continue and afford motion to support public school options that are proximate to Morrisville residents. I am particularly concerned about the K-3 class size mandate that was passed several years ago but was unfunded. This has led to a strong focus on elementary school construction in order to meet capacity requirements, but has not led to a focus on where those kids go after the third grade, and has led to the loss of many classrooms across Wake County in order to fulfill the mandate. I live in Kits Creek, and two of the three base schools assigned are capped. This means residents will have to go further and further away from home. Today, I ask you to accept the unanimous resolution approved by the Morrisville Public Education Advisory Committee to remove the mandate for K-3 class size. This would show that Morrisville is committed to advocate for public schools and work with the Wake County Public School System and the Wake County Board of Education. Please consider this feedback as you continue your work on Agenda Item 12(c), Resolution approving the 2021-2022 Legislative Advocacy Agenda and Related Advocacy Goals, particularly removing the K-3 class size mandate for public school systems. The K-3 class size mandate resulted in the loss of hundreds of classrooms in Wake County and thereby resulted in capped schools and assignment of students to more distant schools, especially here in Morrisville. Proximity will always be of utmost importance to our residents. Please accept the recommendation from the unanimous resolution approved by the Morrisville Public Education Advisory Committee. The next comment is from Sunil Agarwal, 6245 Kit Creek Road, Morrisville, North Carolina. Requesting to remove the K-3 class size mandate for public school systems. The K-3 class size mandate resulted in the damage of hundreds of schoolrooms in Wake County and thus caused capped schools and assignments of students to more distant schools. Thank you. This comment is from Avanti Rochamalu, 6436 Kit Creek Road, Morrisville, North Carolina. Town Council, tonight is your opportunity to confirm that you understand that public school capacity is one of the top concerns of Morrisville residents. Please consider that as you continue your work on Agenda Item 12(c), Resolution approving the 2021-2022 Legislative Advocacy Agenda and Related Advocacy Goals. Of particular concern is to advocate to remove the K-3 class size mandate for public school systems. As you may know, the K-3 class size mandate resulted in the loss of hundreds of classrooms in Wake County and thereby resulted in capped schools and assignment of students to more distant schools. This is also a chance to accept the recommendation from the unanimous resolution approved by the Morrisville Public Education Advisory Committee. Finally, and more importantly, this is a chance for the Town of Morrisville to send a clear message to the Wake County Public School System and the Wake County Board of Education that the Town Council is sincere about Morrisville's strategic plan to develop an advocacy plan to address public education needs. The next comment is from Kathleen Broniak, 315 Millet Drive, Morrisville, North Carolina, which has been her home for 18 years now. I wanted to express my concern about the plans for widening Morrisville Carpenter Road in terms of how it would affect local residents having to turn out of Millet Drive onto a four-lane state road without any additional modifications to slow down traffic in front of our neighborhood. There was already one fatality at this intersection a number of years ago. So we know there is the potential for dangerous situations, and the amount of traffic is significant since there will be an estimated 600 cars coming out of the three subdivisions in my area. I am also concerned that I may not be able to pull out of my driveway if traffic gets backed up on Millet Drive to make the turn on Morrisville Carpenter Road. Please pay attention to my concerns. Thank you. All comments received were provided to council in their entirety and will be entered into the public record, and we do have a resident here for in-person public comment.
Good evening. Actually, the microphone, if you'd be so kind, your name and address for the record, and we appreciate you coming out tonight.
My name is Patty Chang. Address is 304 Millet Drive in the Carpenter Park neighborhood along the main corridor of Morrisville Carpenter Road. Town Council recently awarded $11.6 million contract that has been decades in the making. I remember waiting 12 minutes each morning to drive past Town Hall Drive and NC 54 on my 30-minute drive to work over Six Forks Road in North Raleigh. Morrisville taxpayers are funding 30% of this state road project, about $3.5 million, in order to accommodate the increased traffic on the state-owned road that is just outside our immediate neighborhoods. It was in the late 1990s, nearly less than 25 years ago, when the Groves Carpenter Park Homes and the Richmond subdivisions were approved by Morrisville Town Council to be the first residential neighborhoods between Town Hall Drive and Davis Drive. While much planning has been done to accommodate the pass-through traffic from other communities to travel past the entrances to our neighborhoods, the Town of Morrisville has done very little to accommodate local residents who will be affected by this state road widening project. Currently, Morrisville state planners and engineers intend to place a median in front of Cudrow Lane, the primary entrance to two neighborhoods: Preston Creek's condominiums with 135 residential units, and Carpenter Park's single-family homes with 98 single-family homes. This means all vehicles from 234 residential units would turn left exiting Cudrow Lane that would exit Cudrow Lane now will be required to exit our neighborhoods to access the state road at Millet Drive just outside my home. Together with the Richmond community, where Councilman Rao lives, just opposite Millet Drive, at this intersection, a subdivision that, so Richmond has about 100 homes, and together, that would be over 334 residential homes and units with up to 600 vehicles owned by these residents that must access this one intersection. The intersection is the only left-turn access for all the residents south of Morrisville Carpenter Road, and this intersection was the site of a child's school bus fatality more than 10 years ago. There's far more traffic accessing this intersection than the vehicles that access the Savannah entrance due east of us. And Morrisville Public Safety has attempted to stop traffic at the Savannah crosswalk and said that was dangerous. Yet nothing has been done to provide any traffic calming features at the Millet-Gretow intersection with Morrisville Carpenter Road, as the Town plans to build tennis and pickleball courts at the end of Cudrow Lane within a year of placing a median in front of Cudrow Lane to utterly confuse the potential tennis and pickleball players there. So I just ask that you provide some accommodations to the residents of these communities to turn left on the expanded state road, and thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Was there anything else, Town Clerk Smith?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you. We are now at item 12, action items. There are four action items on tonight's agenda: a proposed amendment of the zoning map for 951 Morrisville Parkway; consideration of a text amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance related to a comprehensive update of the sign regulations; a resolution approving the 2021-2022 Legislative Biennium Advocacy Agenda and Related Advocacy Goals and approval of 2021 Town Council meeting calendar. Elliot Ward, Planner 2, will facilitate the first item. Elliot?
Thank you, Mayor. So the only update I have to my item is the language in the narrative has been updated, Section 3 specifically, to include the language to add the CAC permitted uses that are currently out the site, to maintain those after the rezoning, which was discussed at the previous meeting.
Okay. Do any council members have any questions for Mr. Ward? Okay. So we've been briefed on this a number of times, and we're looking to take action on this evening. I don't believe there were any public hearing comments since our last meeting.
There were none, no.
Okay. So we have a couple of motions in front of us on this item. If someone would like to make a motion for the consistency statement?
I'll go ahead and do that. As required by General Statute 160A-383, I hereby make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-325-0 of the Morrisville Town Council pertaining to the adoption of a planned consistency review statement for a rezoning map amendment for 951 Morrisville Parkway located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Morrisville Parkway and Chapel Hill Road to the Park West Village Mixed Use Plan Development Zoning District, Res. 408-2020, based on the following: The proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan and is in the public interest because (a) it supports Policy 1(a) of the Land Use Plan, which encourages the promotion of growth and development that contributes to and builds upon the Town's overall image as a well-planned, attractive, livable, and unique community in the Triangle region; and (b) it supports Policy 3(c) of the Land Use Plan, which encourages infill and redevelopment of existing areas as a way to promote compact, efficient development.
Okay. I have a motion from Mayor Protem Johnson.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Fender. If Town Clerk Smith can please do a roll call vote on that motion.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to approve Resolution 2020-325-0 passes unanimously.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion on Ordinance 2020-325-0?
I hereby make a motion to approve Ordinance 2020-325-0 of the Morrisville Town Council approving a zoning map amendment for 951 Morrisville Parkway located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Morrisville Parkway and Chapel Hill Road to the Park West Village Mixed Use Plan Development Zoning District, Res. 408-2020.
I have a motion from Mayor Protem Johnson.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Fender. Town Clerk Smith will now facilitate our roll call vote.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to approve Ordinance 2020-325-0 passes unanimously.
Thank you, sir. Michelle Steegel, Planning Director, will facilitate our next item.
This item relates to the comprehensive update of the sign code, and I'm gonna allow our project consultant Greg Jones, who is on the line, to provide a brief update to you.
Thank you, Joe. Mayor and Town Council members, good to see you all once again. Just wanted to provide a quick update from our last meeting to highlight a couple of changes we've made specifically addressing comments concerning electronic signs. Section 5.16.6 of the draft sign code has been modified to reduce the maximum size of electronic signs that are permitted from 40% of the sign area to 33%, so that's a 7% reduction. And we've also included language limiting the number of colors that can be displayed on a message. The prior draft included no limit, and the council had expressed some concerns about multicolored or overly colorful signs, potentially providing a distraction to motorists and other folks. And the code has been revised to limit sign messages to contain no more than two colors on electronic signs. And then just to highlight one other change that was included in the prior draft, so it was a change before the last meeting, but electronic sign displays must remain static. So it's gotta be a static message, and it can only change no more than once per hour. The current code allows signs to change much more frequently, I believe it's every 10 seconds. So this has been a step towards making the electronic signs more conservative, and specifically a nod toward accommodating gas station signage, so the price of gasoline specifically, which I do believe the Town Council did want to accommodate as part of this update. So those are the only changes we've made since the last meeting. Happy to answer any questions that any council members have.
Mr. Jones, I'll begin. Is there any reason that we have to start with percentages and bring them down rather than just start with the existing sign sizes?
Well, the percentages are tied, it's a good question. The percentages are tied to staff's research on the size of the sign. And you might remember at the last meeting, staff had done some research over prior permit records and identified a couple of electronic signs, and that 40% figure was keyed to the percentage that those electronic signs occupied of the overall ground. So that's where the number came from. There's no legal reason why you have to use a percentage. Alternately, you can use a square footage figure. I will say that a lot of communities use a percentage because not all ground signs are the same size. So if you use 10 square feet, for example, as a figure, that may be more appropriate on a ground sign that has 30 square feet and less appropriate on a ground sign that has 10 square. So that's kind of the methodology behind the percentage. That said, if the council would prefer to use a square footage hard figure, that's something that can be accommodated as well.
I'd be interested in at least having that option, because at this time, I think the 40%, a lot of our ground signs are fairly small, so the percentage might not reflect what we expect to get if ground signs become larger. Like, what's the largest allowable ground size, ground sign size?
Right now, oh, sorry, Greg. Go ahead. Go ahead.
No, that's you.
Generally speaking, if you look Generally speaking, if you look at the table, ground sign type A, the largest sign there is 32 square feet. There is notably, though, an exception for shopping centers of a certain size. They can have one of their signs go up to 64 square feet. But at 32 square feet, you are looking at, you know, 33% of that area would be roughly 10 square feet.
Okay, so essentially, three by three, which is larger than anything that we have now that's in compliance.
Hard to say. The two permits that we pulled, which were the two that we have on record, I think were in the five to seven square foot range.
Okay, so I guess when it comes to this, it was my understanding that we were trying to address this federal ruling, not to expand the rights, the signs by right. So, I feel like the percentage rather than the minimum square foot diminishes our ability to provide a pleasing aesthetic environment here in Morrisville. So, how soon could you get us the square footage so we'd have that as an option?
And Greg, I'll let you weigh in as well. I think our consultant makes a good point about some of it could depend on the size of the sign. If you have a 10-square-foot sign, I don't know that your intent is to allow that entire sign necessarily to be electronic. You could, and Attorney Jones and I haven't talked about this, but potentially do a combination even, you know, 33% or no more than 10 square feet. I don't know how council would feel about that. Attorney Jones, I'll let you weigh in as well.
And actually, sorry, I just was going to say that 10 square feet is larger than the largest existing right now. So, I'd actually want it to be less than 10 square feet as a maximum, just to allow the current gas stations, which are in compliance, to continue to have their signs. We don't want them to have to replace them. But it's my intention to not have this item expand the electronic signs at all. So, just to be clear about that. Mr. Jones?
Yeah, just a couple of quick points. There's, again, legally, there is, you can set it by percentage, you can set it by square footage, you can do a combination of the two. That's not a problem at all. Second, just to clarify the point on the, you know, I guess perceived liberalization of the electronic sign regulations. That's not the intent, and that's actually, I don't believe that's what we're doing. The current sign code doesn't require electronic signs to be on ground-mounted signs, which is why you have electronic signs on gas station canopies and in some other locations. This sign code limits them only to ground-mounted signs. Also, I don't believe the current sign code, and Michelle, you can jump in if I'm wrong here, I don't believe it includes a cap on the size, and certainly not as a percentage of the sign. So, absolutely appreciate that the signs in Morrisville currently are of a certain dimension, but folks were actually allowed, I believe, to build much larger electronic signs that are out there right now. So, we're not trying to lead the market, we're not doing anything that is more liberal than what you have right now. In fact, I believe we're making it more restrictive. And just from a practical perspective, too, I think the one regulation we haven't really talked about but might be the most important here is you're limiting how frequently these signs can be changed, no more than once an hour. These signs are expensive, and the only way that business owners typically invest in them is if they can monetize it, whether they're advertising products for sale on the inside of the business or some other way where they have rapid-changing messages more than once per hour. In reality, when you see regulations that are this restrictive and only allow changes to occur once per hour, you're probably only going to get gas station signs advertising the sale of product. That's just the reality of it. Investing in the technology and the infrastructure necessary to make these electronic signs work and make business sense requires the messages to change more than once per hour. So, the idea here and the result is not to, you know, turn Morrisville into Branson, Missouri, or Las Vegas. I'm sorry if anybody has a particular affinity for either of those places, but I only bring them up because their signs are well noted and kind of define the aesthetic. That's not what this code does.
Okay, and the liberalization of the fact that a lot of people haven't taken advantage of what is a pretty liberal sign code now, I would just hate to open the doors to allow others to actually start to use them in a way that we didn't intend. So, the fact that people haven't done those things doesn't make it, make this more liberal. The intent is to try to keep it the way it is, in my opinion, rather than allow more. And when I say "as it is," not the regulations as they are, but the existing signage as it is. So, I'll recognize Councilmember Garamella, and then Councilmember Fender, followed by Mayor Protem Johnson, please.
Yeah, I think I like the new changes, and I really feel, you know, we have been going on with this for such a long time. I want to have a closure today, take a vote, and get it out. That's my say.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Fender?
I want to thank Michelle for making those changes from our last discussion. I am okay with the limits that are currently there in the latest revision here with the 33% and the static message for a period of one hour, and especially the limiting it to two colors. So, thank you for making those changes.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
So, I'm going to echo Councilmember Fender. I am good with the changes that have been made. I understand the concern about not opening up, but what we just heard, opening up for more signage, and I know your concern, T.J., about the look at the town, I think we all are, but I think you just heard from our consultant, the attorney, that we are actually making it more restrictive. So, I'm good with the path that we're on now. I do have one question, and I am still okay with the limiting of the colors, but tell me, Michelle, what if somebody came in and had a logo, and I'm thinking of a gas station, that had a logo, and they wanted to put their logo on the sign, and the logo had multiple colors? How would we handle that?
If they wanted that on the electronic sign portion, and the code limited that to two colors, they would not be able to use their logo colors. I think if you're thinking of a gas station, most gas stations have their logo on a different part of the sign outside of the electronic portion, so they would still be able to do their logo on the other part of the sign.
Okay, okay, good. Because I just want to make sure that we're accommodating, because there are some logos that have multiple colors, and, okay, all right, I'm good with that then, thank you.
Looking to see if anyone else has any other comments. Councilmember Robati, please.
Thank you. Michelle, is that something that a company would be able to apply for a variance if they wanted to use their logo? Could we deal with that on a case-by-case basis, or is that two colors, hard and fast, that's the rule?
And could they apply yes? I don't know that the town has ever seen a variance application from a sign requirement. However, the standards for variances are very hard to meet. One of those standards is that it cannot be for economic gain, so it might be difficult to get that approved, but they could apply.
Okay, thank you. Just want to understand what the parameters are. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other comments, we can, is there a motion on Resolution 2020-286-0?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion from Mayor Protem Johnson.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Fender. Town Clerk Smith will facilitate our roll call vote.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Nay.
The motion to approve Resolution 2020-286-0 passes.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Ms. Stiegel. Thank you for all the work, all the hard work, and thank you, Mr. Jones. We really appreciate. This has been a number of years in the making, and we really appreciate you helping us be compliant. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all. It's been a pleasure working with you.
Okay.
Clarification, please. Is there a resolution and an ordinance that need approved?
It appears that there is.
Yeah.
Is that just a statement of the sentence, or do we need more language?
I think you adopted the consistency statement, but you need a vote on the ordinance.
Sorry, I don't have any.
2020-286-0, the ordinance?
Just the ordinance title is fine.
Just the title.
Just the ordinance title, okay. I make a motion to approve Ordinance 2020-286-0.
Second.
Town Clerk Smith will do our roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Nay.
The motion to approve Ordinance 2020-286-0 passes.
Thank you, sir, and thank you, Town Manager Page. Appreciate that. Erin L. Hudson, Strategic Performance Manager, will facilitate our next action item. Ms. Hudson.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Going to do a really quick recap here and then turn it over to you all. So, council began discussing its legislative advocacy agenda at the November 10th meeting, reviewing some of the draft feedback that was submitted by senior staff and council. We shared a good bit of background information on the North Carolina League of Municipalities' updated processes to draft their advocacy goals, also used to help focus some of their efforts when advocating for cities and towns across the state at the state legislature level, and some of that information that's going to be shared with municipalities when the league votes on their draft advocacy goals in January of this year. Council then continued that discussion about some of the compiled feedback at the November 24th meeting. There were a couple of challenges just to some of that more effective collaboration and discussion due to some of the hybrid live/remote setting, and we talked about some ways that we could give additional opportunities for you all to share feedback and prioritize or provide any clarifying language on some of those topics that had been shared. So, we solicited that input from you all, and you provided that to us, and we incorporated that priority feedback within and updated Attachment Number 3, and that's in your agenda packet for your review and subsequent discussion this evening. The draft resolution was also amended to reflect council's common priorities, as was shared in that priority feedback, including the high-ranked and some of the medium-ranked priorities. So, what I mean there is rankings were weighted in correlation to an assigned color. So, green was your high, yellow was medium, and orange was low. So, those were weighted 3, 2, 1 accordingly. All responses that received a total weight of greater than 2 were included in your updated draft resolution for your discussion. That resolution can continue to be further amended. That's your decision as part of your collaboration continues. So, additionally, at its December meeting earlier last week, the Morrisville Public Education Advisory Committee amended its agenda to include some discussion of exactly what you all have been talking about. So, your discussion and the league discussion about legislative advocacy, they asked for a little bit of background information about that, and they wanted to provide some input on items related to schools. So, during that discussion, a draft resolution was shared requesting that Town Council include the advocacy item to remove the K3 class-size mandate in its legislative agenda. That resolution was put forward to the committee and approved unanimously by roll call vote and is included for information and part of your consideration in this agenda packet as Attachment Number 5. So, as an aside there, that particular item was weighted a 2 in your priority feedback overall, so it was not included in your draft resolution. Again, that is totally up to council's discretion as to how to amend that, so that can be part of your discussion as well. Did have a conversation today with the Town of Cary legislative advocacy staff. Cary Town Council is not going to be considering its legislative agenda until a January meeting, so probably more information to come there on how we might be able to collaborate further with them. Happy to answer any questions, help with any part of this discussion or facilitation as best I can.
Okay, does anyone have any questions before we begin our discussion?
I have a question.
Yeah, Councilmember Fender, please.
I just wanted to be reminded of what the A, B, and C meant in the fourth column of our ranking.
On which attachment are you referring to, Councilmember Fender?
I'm looking at the priority rank exercise, yeah, the one that's on the screen.
So, those are the weight, wait, apologies. Those are the rankings that were assigned by the League of Municipalities during their policy ranking exercises.
All right.
So, A is high priority, B is medium, so it's likely not going to move forward but still could, and C essentially is that it's not, it's not that it isn't important, but likely will not be moving forward as a priority legislative item.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so to facilitate discussion, I think it might be good to take this in chunks.
I believe that there was three items that ranked pretty high, and they're labeled as green on here. So, if we could get affirmation that those three are okay to be on our legislative agenda, I think that would be a good start. So, and then I'll finish that statement, then we'll recognize Councilmember Garamella. So, looking at the screen right now, there is one that went, that everyone who responded said that that was one that we definitely wanted, and that was just on the screen, but that was essentially the one that says "Develop Revenue Replacement Toolkit for Municipalities." And the one that placed second in our rankings was "Pursue Statewide Bond for NCDOT Funding." And the third in our rankings was "Require North Carolina Government Employees to Participate in Implicit Bias Training with an Established Funding Source." So, at this point, I think I'll recognize Councilmember Garamella for a comment or question, and then we'll do a straw poll on those three to make sure they're all fine. Councilmember Garamella?
Yeah, thanks, T.J. Erin, can you remind us all, like, what is the process? We are doing this, and then it comes in front of the board meeting on the 10th where everyone, you know, gets to talk about it. There might be, you know, hundreds of these, right? Or is this the only list being floated to all the towns?
So, that's an excellent question. Thank you, Councilmember Garamella. So, this is Morrisville's individual advocacy list. So, there were a whole litany of topics and suggestions that were shared with the League of Municipalities, and those were all considered and vetted and kind of sorted, so to speak, and those are the ones that the board is going to be voting on, on the 10th, the board at the League of Municipalities. The topics that are before you currently are the ones that have been shared by our council and our staff, as those topics that are really important to Morrisville, and so this is what we will use in our discussions with our legislators and our regional partners for this upcoming biennium when we have those discussions.
Okay, that's helpful. So, run me through a scenario, right? Like, you know, if we are, say, NCDOT is a good one, you know, funding for a bonding, okay? So, what if, you know, the Wake County delegation says yes, and other people say no, I'm just for a hypothesis, you know, and our assumptions, like, then how does the NCLM board pick from there? You know, is there, like, a vetting that goes after, you know, it goes, or they already have a list if you're not in that list? Because sometimes I feel like we are doing all this exercise, they might have already set there with something to approve. Does that even get into the cut?
So, I'm not sure if I'm answering your que- So I'm not sure if I'm answering your question correctly, so let me parse this out a little, a little more clearly if I can. So the topics that were solicited and submitted to the NCLM over the last month, month and a half, two months, those have already been received, and those have been vetted by the Legislative Policy Committee, and those have been sorted into that priority categorization which you see in column number four on the screen. And those are the ones that the board at the League of Municipalities is going to vote on. Then that set of legislative advocacy items is going to come back before all municipalities that are members of the league and will essentially vote to affirm those. So the league will have a broad set of legislative advocacy items that they'll use to kind of support all municipalities across the state. These are just specific to Morrisville. These do not go back to the League of Municipalities for consideration.
So.
Is that, is that more clear?
Yeah, so bottom line, whatever we do is not going to them, right? Like, is that what I hear from you?
So not, it doesn't go to them for approval. We still share it with them.
Yeah.
Because essentially, we still share with them how ours aligns with theirs, how we can work together collaboratively, how they can support the topics that are really important to Morrisville and to our community. So it certainly still is shared with them, but not for their subsequent approval.
Okay. So Liz, you have been here in this role many times. So what's your take? How does it all work out? Because I see all this effort that we are doing, how much does it really play in front of the board of NCLM?
So, so Teesh, this year is very unique. Typically, all of these calls are talked about at an advocacy goals conference where we all attend, and then as a membership of the league, we all vote on these, and they narrow them down to a smaller set that they concentrate on during the next two years. So because, because there is not that in-person advocacy goals conference where we all weigh in, they tried to do it all virtually this year. They did it very differently. And quite frankly, I think they planned on doing it differently anyhow, but, you know, just the fact that we can't all be together has changed things. So you, when you go to the meeting on Thursday, Thursday is the 10th, right? Yeah, you'll.
Yeah.
Yeah, you all, you all, again, I'm not sure, you all maybe will bless the shorter list that the league, because the league staff can't work on all of this. They, they need to prioritize what they want the staff to work on. You know, of course, all of these are important, and if they come up during the year, the staff would, would work on them, but they need to prioritize, and that's what this process is all about. I don't know if that makes, if that helped you.
Yeah, 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 it is. I mean, the only thing I'm looking, okay, you know, when I go in, is there anything that I can even put? Because the way you guys are telling me is this, all the list has already been vetted out before, and, and just we are getting for our town point of view, but on a broad sense, that vote has already sailed, that we will, that we will be seeing on Thursday morning, right?
I, I believe that's correct, yes.
Okay, okay. So, all right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. And Teesh?
And if I may, one.
Yes, please, Ms. Hudson.
I'm sorry. I was going to say, if I can maybe offer one more point for Councilmember Garamella, any discussion or decisions made tonight, don't feel as though you have to turn these back around to the league for approval or anything of that sort. Again, we will, of course, share these with them as a partner, but not for the same process that they have already gone through statewide. I don't know if maybe that answers.
Yeah, yeah.
Some of your questions a little more.
Exactly. That answers, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I think a good way to think about it, this is kind of a parallel process, because as Ms. Hudson mentioned, for the last few months, they've had opportunities for elected officials and staff to weigh into this process, and there were discussions at that level, and now they're to the point where they're ready to pare those down to a manageable number to present to the entire municipal grouping later on. So it's, it's been working, and now we're just concentrating on what's ours and what we want to be working on. And one of the things that we usually do is that we also affirm what the NCLM goals are. So those are generally broader, and sometimes ours overlap with those, and sometimes they don't. But right now, we're talking about what's important to Morrisville. So I'll recognize Mayor Pro Tim Johnson, followed by Councilmember Fender.
So I'd like to make a suggestion. We, we do not need to talk about these individual items over again. That's what we said at our last meeting, we did not want to do. We sent in our tallies to, to staff, and then they came up with these that are in front of us in this resolution as the top vote-getting items. So I don't think we need to go through this all over again. I think what we need to do is, number one, are we okay what, what staff has come up with as our top priorities? And I am. I am okay with what they put up, what they, what they have in front of us here in the resolution. And then I would say, do we need to add to it? And I would say, maybe yes. But I, I don't think we need to go through each one. We have all individually done that, and this is a compilation of what we voted on.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Fender?
Yeah, I agree with Mayor Pro Tim Johnson that we don't need to review each individual line item there, and, but I do think, considering the public comments and the resolution from MPAC, that we should take a look at adding to the resolution, you know, getting rid of the K through three mandate, because that does have a big impact on, on Morrisville and Morrisville residents.
So unless I hear otherwise, sounds like we're going to simply look at the resolution and add things instead of going through everything. So I'm fine with that. It's just a different way to skin that cat. So at this time, if anyone has an issue with adding that item onto the resolution as drafted about removing the K through, remove class size limit mandate on public schools K through three, as written, now is the time to speak up on that one. So it sounds like we're good to add that one on. I was coming at this a slightly different way. I was thinking that the three greens could go forward, and I was thinking that seven of the yellows could go forward, but drop the, the one, the two and the 2.01. So I just need a second to try to organize my thoughts on that, because I didn't do it this way.
So I, while you're doing that.
Yeah, please.
I'll make this really easy. I'm okay with the resolution as it's presented by staff and adding the one item to remove the class size limit mandate on public schools K to three. I think that would, I think that does capture the prioritization of the council members that weighed in, and I think that we can make this very easy tonight. And I'd be happy to make that motion when the time comes.
Okay, almost there.
Councilmember Robati has a comment, too?
Oh, thank you. Councilmember Robati, please.
Thank you, Mayor. So the, I think that if we're going to, if we're going to, to do that, that we should look at the one immediately, at the resolution immediately above it, to eliminate unfunded mandates or require an established funding source or identify revenue option to offset municipal expenses. I think that, that that one's the one that captures, it broadly captures, restricting the NCGA from, from putting forth any unfunded mandate. I mean, the reason, it wasn't the class size that was the issue, it was the fact that the mandate was unfunded, and that we had to, and that the WCPSS had to scramble around to find the money. So I think that those two, I think those two resolutions really go hand in hand.
So I agree, Ann. I will tell you, I struggled with the K to three one, because, you know, I, I started out as a teacher early on in my career, and my dad was a teacher. I know the value of small class size. So this would have been good if it came with funding to make it successful, and that is the problem. And we do, we do often get mandates that come down that, that have no associated funding source and make it very, very difficult.
Well, I think, and where I was really going with that, Liz, was that unfunded mandates are, are political in nature, whereas funded mandates are about government for the good of the people. So I think, so I don't know that if the, if eliminating the unfunded mandates would, would be retroactive to this one, to the removing the class size limit, you know, I just think that if we're going to add one, it may be more important to add, to fully eliminate unfunded mandates. But if we can only add, if it would not be retroactive and we can only add one, I do think that we have to, that it should be the class size mandate. Thank you.
So I was wondering about that one, because it was right on the bubble that you're talking about, Councilmember Robati. And also, since it's a core municipal principle, I was thinking that that was, but it's labeled as a C. So Ms. Hudson, I was a little bit confused about that.
Yeah, happy to offer a comment there, Mayor. So in the NCLM core municipal principles, one of their principles are to minimize state and local mandates. So that is already a key focus area that they have. So that is actually why it was categorized, the eliminate unfunded mandates and/or require an established funding source, et cetera. That's actually why it was categorized as a C, because there's already focus and attention on that particular area. So if council wanted, clearly we can, we can add that in as one of your individual elements. We could also, if I may offer, restate one of the whereas clauses and express your kind of explicit support for the NCLM core municipal principles. You know, we are clearly, I think, indicating that we support NCLM municipal advocacy goals, but if you wanted to state that support for their core municipal principles, I think that's an option as well for your consideration.
How would you feel about that as a solution, Councilmember Robati?
Sorry, I think I was muted. That's fine with me. I just, as I said, I think, honestly, I think that both of those are very, very important. I, I guess, I'm sorry, Erin, I glitched out or something when, when we decided how many we could put forward that would be in the green area, but if both of those could be green, that'd be great. If not, I think that we have to err on the side of the one that's really hurting Morrisville right now, which is that unfunded mandate for the K to three class size cap.
I don't think we, as a group, decided that there was some maximum number that we're willing to put forward.
Oh, okay.
So this is, this is up to us. It's what you're comfortable calling your legislature or meeting them in person and discussing on behalf of the town. So I don't think there's a limit. Councilmember Allen?
With respect to the K through 12, you know, adding the K3 bill, I just had an idea for any citizen listening today and also the council. I think in addition to adding it to the NCLM list, one of the things I'd like to see is we could reach out to the standing committees in the North Carolina House and the State Senate on Education to share our concerns that this mandate or this limit, their actions have resulted in schools being overcrowded. And I think it's important that we, we have some people we know very well that are on those committees. Senator Jay Choudhury sits on the Senate Education Committee. Cynthia Ball sits on the House Education Committee. But I think reaching out to the chairs of both committees, who are Republicans, and inviting them as well, you know, when we've done those town hall meetings, I think that's very important so that we can actually, not only for the Morrisville residents, just have something on advocacy agenda, but seeing if there's a way we can show them that there's, you know, the impact it's having on, on us, just to food for thought. It's really never come up in our advocacy strategy as a town, but the standing committees are the ones that make the laws and set the policies. So I think we should be going to the leaders of those committees.
Okay. So yeah, this, when we approve this resolution, it'll be used to advocate for the town, and education is obviously something that's really important to everyone. So if, it sounds like a good idea to go ahead and add that one in, the eliminate unfunded mandates or require an established funding source, identified revenue option to offset municipal expenses into the resolution. I don't think that dilutes it. I think it strengthens it. So everyone okay with doing that? Looking around for any concerns? Okay. There is one that isn't on the resolution that I'd be interested in discussing as a group, and that is the create an independent nonpartisan committee to redraw legislative maps when new census data is finalized. I believe NCLM feels like, given the legislature being the way it is, it's a bit of a nonstarter. But I think it is something that is important for us as a town to stake out our position that it's better to have the people choose their representatives rather than the other way around. So Jay, just curious about the appetite of the council to add that one into the resolution, which isn't on there right now. Recognize, Councilmember Robati, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The reason that I personally labeled that as a yellow, and I don't know if other people had, had the same reasoning, was because this, this issue is already making its way through the courts, and I, I don't see this, frankly, as a, as a legislative action item. I think that there's, I think that, I think it's very, very, very important. It may be the most important thing that we look at, but I don't think that this is, that this list or the NCLM is the path to move that forward. So that's why I personally did not label it as a green. I chose other things that I felt that, that there would be more, more chance of direct advocacy action moving the needle.
Understood. Thank you for sharing. Seeing no other comments on that one, I don't think that one moves forward at this time. So I think we're close to being able to adopt this resolution. Erin, what have you heard from us about adding the K3 and the eliminate unfunded mandates? Are those two items that you could just add as bullets and we can adopt the resolution as amended?
Yes, sir. So I've, I've been making some notes on my Word version of your resolution as you've been talking, so I will add in the two additional focus headers of Healthy Finances, and that captures the eliminate unfunded mandates or require an established funding source, identified revenue option to offset municipal expenses, and also the Vibrant Communities and Neighborhoods focus area. And under that one is the Remove Class Size Limit Mandate on Public Schools K through Three. That captures all of the elements that we pulled from your prioritized feedback, and then the two that you have added tonight. And then when you're ready, you can, I believe, make your motion to amend, apologies, adopt your resolution as amended pending any other further discussion you want.
Okay. At this time, opening it up for any further discussion or thoughts about this resolution before we take a vote as amended. Okay, seeing none, I entertain a motion. Councilmember Robati, please. Councilmember Robati, please.
I will make that motion. I want to ask a quick question first. Erin, in light of recent events, do you think that we should consider adding something vaccine distribution related to this list? Or is that, do you feel like that's a nonstarter, given that the NCLM has already, has already pretty much moved forward with their legislative, their advocacy agenda?
So I'll, I'll answer your question backwards, actually. So they actually have not approved it yet. Their, their goals go to their board for kind of initial blessing on Thursday, then that comes forward to all members for a full vote in January. I, I don't have them pulled up just here in front of me. I would have to go back and look. I am inclined to think that there is one or two items related to some COVID-type funding, maybe not specifically vaccine referenced there. You all actually had a fairly high-ranking item under adaptive municipal operations on page two of your resolution to provide additional COVID-19 relief funds for municipalities to offset continuing costs, and outlined a couple of items there. If you all, as a, as a body, feel that that is an important item to include, certainly have that discussion, and we could include that item.
Okay. I, I apologize. I have forgotten that that was one of the items. I think that that would, I think that would pretty much cover us in that area. I'm ready to make that motion.
Okay. If you could hold for just a moment, I'd like to recognize Mayor Protem Johnson for a comment first before the motion. Thank you, ma'am.
So I ju- I just want to make sure Councilmember Robati knows, we can amend, this is our resolution, this is council's resol- resolution. We can amend this at any time we want. If come, you know, the first meeting in January, we decide we need to add something that was not, is not on our radar tonight, we can absolutely add that. So we, you know, as things become important to us, and this is a long session coming up too, so we can, we can do all kinds of things in the, in the months ahead. So keep that in mind.
Okay.
That's the only comment I wanted to make, but I'm ready for...
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Councilmember Robati to make a motion.
Councilmember Robati.
Thank you, Liz. You are a treasure on this council, Liz. I don't know what I would do without you. Okay, I make a motion that we approve Resolution 2020-335-0 of the Mooresville Town Council approving the 2021-2022 Legislative Biennium Advocacy Agenda and Related Advocacy Goals.
As amended.
As amended.
I have a motion from Councilmember Robati.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Fender. Town Clerk Smith will now facilitate our roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Rao.
Aye.
Councilmember Robati.
Aye.
Councilmember Fender.
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Colley.
Aye.
The motion to approve Resolution 2020-335-0 as amended passes unanimously.
Thank you. Good work, everybody. That's a, it's good to have that under our belt, and we can use that when we speak to our legislators. Martha Page, Town Manager, will facilitate our final action item tonight. Ms. Page.
Thank you, Mayor. Included in council's agenda was a proposed 2021 meeting calendar that included our regular meetings on the second and fourth Tuesdays of each month, with the exception of December, that had only one Tuesday meeting in December. It also included our proposed Town Council Retreat at the end of February and some budget workshop updates, including a presentation on May 4th, and then some budget workshops in May and June. That has been what has been published to the public and would be your typical meeting calendar. As we have continued to discuss the need for some additional time to manage both our regular meetings and do the work of council, in particular this year would be our bond referendum planning and the continued work on the CIP to support the bond referendum planning. I have worked since our last meeting to talk to each council member a little bit individually to get some additional comment and feedback. I sent out some proposed dates of Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday council meetings in five months additional to what is on the regular schedule. That would be January, February, excuse me, January, March, and then July, August, and September. All of those really to support our bond referendum and CIP planning. I, I recognize there is still some discussion council may wish to have on that. I have provided at the, the council members that are here some hard copies, and to those that are participating virtually, you got it in your email to show you how those dates would look. We've also talked about ways to improve our efficiency, that's both at the staff level and at the council level. For staff, that will mean moving more and more towards not presenting items that do not require council discussion. They would be reports, and then it would be incumbent upon council to read that information and ask questions as they had questions, rather than hear a presentation from staff. We will be able to work on sliding that into meetings as we collect our rolling calendar information for the first quarter. Council also needs to continue to talk about how they may want to improve their efficiency in discussion and collaboration on items to manage our time in our meetings. I am happy to answer any specific questions or make a recommendation based on what I heard from council members.
Okay. Any questions from council members at this time? Okay. I think we would appreciate hearing your recommendation.
My recommendation for simplicity, both for council, for staff, and for the public, would be to put the meetings on Tuesdays. I probably heard a mix of Monday preference and Tuesday preference. For January, we would need to move a Monday meeting to a Tuesday anyways, but there was about half preferred Tuesday, half preferred Monday. Either would work, but Tuesday may be simpler because we already meet on Tuesdays.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, and if that...
Okay.
Before we make the motion...
Yeah, please. Councilmember Ann.
Before we make the motion, are we going to continue to have discussion, just in terms of, you know, ideas we can have about bringing efficiency to the work session? One thing that I would like to see, just food for thought, is moving forward, and this is just a recommendation to staff, just take it, is just advice, friendly advice, just I would rather see in the work sessions less presentations from staff on stuff that we've already seen, and perhaps maybe from you all, a specific goal that you can give us so when we're going in, we know what we're trying to achieve, what is the ask of us, or what do we need to decide, so that, you know, I just think, and I'm not trying to point the finger, I'm, I'm actually saying it's on us to be ready so that we can ask those questions. And I just, you know, I just want to throw that out there as an observation, because I think, especially when you have the work sessions on Tuesday, if you do them after the council meeting, it gets very late, and you feel like, you know, you're just, you keep going and going, and then it's like 11:30 at night, and then I feel like it's not as productive. So I'd rather do the work sessions in the beginning, or, you know, try to, you know, do a halfway point and have the work sessions when we're all fresh. But I think for all of us, it would be helpful, like, for example, for the bond, when we do the work sessions, before that work session, we should know what is the goal, what are we trying to achieve? Are we trying to figure out what's going to be on the bond? Are we going to categorize it? Are we doing all that stuff? So that way, I think we could, and it's just my idea, you all may not agree with me, I'm just, I'm just trying to think out loud before we...
Yeah, I think setting expectations in advance is really helpful, and staff's been increasingly good about doing that and giving us things to react to. I think at our last retreat, we found that to be very successful, that this board works really efficiently when presented something to react to, and then we discuss it, and then we make a decision and we move on. So those are really great ideas, and I think the idea of having, moving the work sessions from late in regular meetings to these separate five meetings, I think that helps a lot. So we really appreciate staff bringing this forth. Mayor Protem Johnson.
So yeah, I, I agree, Steve. I think that, you know, we're, we're seeing that, so I, I would agree with, with both of you are saying. Also, Martha said something really important, too. She said they're going to move a lot of presentations to administrative presentations, which I think is going to be really helpful, too. I think it, it's, it's our responsibility to read the material and be up to speed and then ask the questions that we may have. There's nothing wrong with asking the questions, but I, I don't know that we need, in all cases, to have those presentations in front of us. I, I can read really well. So, so I think that may help. So I think we're, you know, let's try that and see how that works as we're moving forward. But I think all of us, you know, staff and council together, need to be working on how to, how to make things more efficient and, and get through our meetings efficiently and effectively.
Okay. Great. So I think we are ready for a motion. Mayor Protem.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-384-0 of the Mooresville Town Council approving the Town Council 2021 meeting calendar, including Tuesday work sessions.
So that's version two? Okay. I have a motion.
Second.
And I have a second from Councilmember Fender. Town Clerk Smith will do a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Rao.
Aye.
Councilmember Robati.
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella.
Aye.
Councilmember Fender.
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Colley.
Aye.
The motion to approve version two of Resolution 2020-384-0 passes unanimously.
Thank you, sir. We are now at item 12, future meetings, events, and citizen involvement opportunities. For a full listing of events, please see the town calendar at www.townofmoorsville.org. First off, happy holidays to all. We celebrated the poster contest earlier, that was great. The deadline for high school students to submit stormwater-related photos for that separate contest is this upcoming Friday, December 11th. Please see TOM Stormwater on Twitter or our main Facebook page for more information about that. On Friday, December 18th, at 6:00 p.m., the Mooresville Police Department will hold a virtual holiday event streamed live on the town's Facebook page. During the event, the police department will unveil a virtual holiday card, have storytime with police officers, a live acoustic musical performance, and a greeting from Santa. We hope that you will join us for that. Town offices will be closed for the holidays on December 24th, 25th, and 28th, and on January 1st as well. At this time, we are at council and manager comments. I recognize Mayor Protem Johnson, please.
So I, just a couple of things. First, I want to congratulate Victoria Lightfoot. Victoria was recently, or today, not recently, just today, listed as one of the 10 finalists for the 2020, 2021 Wake County Public School System Teacher of the Year. So Victoria Lightfoot is right here at Cedar Fork Elementary, so wanted to make sure she gets a shout out, and, and of course, to congratulate all the other nine finalists for Wake County Teacher of the Year. Also, a, a couple of folks have asked me recently about how to donate and how to give back in the community. There are lots of nonprofits that are looking for donations of money, of goods, and of course, of help, but for those that are looking for something close, and that's right here in the town of Mooresville, our, our Mooresville Youth Council is doing a food drive. They're working with the Interfaith Food Shuttle, and they will be collecting food at Cedar Fork Community Center, starting December 15th through the 22nd. You can bring food items to Cedar Fork Community Center. And then for those that are, want to stay as safe as possible, they are doing a drive-by drop-off of food items on December 19th and 20th. And so that's one way to, to give to the Interfaith Food Shuttle, and it's right here in the town of Mooresville. And then the other important way to give back for those that are interested, the Marines always have their Toys for Tot, Toys for Tots event, and there are two drop boxes that are right here in the town of Mooresville. There are actually more than two, but many of them are with private businesses, but there are two public businesses that are accepting toys. The first is Bye Bye Baby at Park West Village, and you can drop off a toy there until December 14th. And the other one is Pep Boys, which is on Chapel Hill Road on NC 54, over in the Park Place Shopping Center, and they're accepting toys until December 11th. So those are right here in the town of Mooresville. You don't have to go really far. And of course, lots of nonprofits would accept your donation online, too, so a couple of ways to give back. And as we all know, this is our last council meeting of the year, and, and I, I'm going to be brutally honest and tell you, I, I am not sad to see this year over. I am not sad to see 2020 over. This has been an incredible year, and it's usually at this meeting every year where I thank our staff and I extend thanks to their families for, for an incredible year and for the work that you've all done. This has, I, I don't know, I don't have the words to say thank you this year. This has been, this, I can feel myself getting emotional. This has been a really tough year for all of us, and so I want to say thank you. Thank you for all your hard work. Make sure you hug your family members a little tighter this year. And more than anything, stay safe, and that's for our residents, too. I am hoping to see everybody in 2021. You can't do it unless we stay safe and be really careful, and the governor spoke today. The numbers are not looking good in this state, so please, please, be careful out there. I spent Thanksgiving in my mother's driveway. We all sat outside and had a Thanksgiving meal in our driveway. We're planning on doing the same for Christmas. So, so be careful out there, because I really want you to have a very happy holiday, and but I want you also all to have a very happy and healthy New Year. So I'm sorry, but I'm telling you, I, I'm, I'm looking forward to 2021, and we're almost there, folks. The vaccine's going to be rolling out, we're closer to the end of this shortly than we were back in March, so everybody hang in there, and thank you all for being an incredibly compassionate and caring community.
Thank you. I would also like to thank staff for all the hard work all throughout the year, but especially for our virtual tree lighting. That was a fun event. We just beat the rain last Friday, and the whole area around town hall looks great. The pandemic has made this past year especially challenging, as Mayor Protem said. I thank each of you who took personal responsibility for your actions and have made the sacrifices necessary to keep our families, friends, and neighbors safe by reducing in-person interactions and following the three W's. Wear a mask, wait six feet apart, and wash your hands. The end is in sight, and I know we will persevere together to eradicate this virus and build an even better future. I've been witness to the generosity and support which our Mooresville neighbors have demonstrated to each other, our staff, and to complete strangers. I am optimistic that this culture of kindness will continue throughout this upcoming winter and persist after we have eradicated COVID-19. I am proud to be part of this kind, welcoming, and responsible community, and wish everyone a wonderful holiday season, and we'll see you next year. Next is Councilmember Fender, please.
I would like to just wish everyone a happy holiday, and I hope everyone is, has a peaceful holiday, a safe and healthy holiday, like a lot of what has already been said. This is a time to treasure our family, give them tight hugs, and we also need to be just taking care of ourselves. Everyone is getting COVID fatigue, has anxiety, you know, all these things are, are normal. So just take time to be with your family and to take care of yourself as well, because it, it is stressful, and it is, it is hard and challenging time. You got me thinking, Liz, that I usually have a New Year's Eve party, and this would be definitely one year I would want to usher out and usher in the, the new, uh, new year, but this year will be, we won't have one. So we'll just, we'll get through this together.
Thank you. Councilmember Robati, followed by Councilmember Rao, please.
It's such an emotional night, isn't it? I just wanted to say that when, at this time last year... I just wanted to say that when, at this time last year, there is no way that I could have looked forward and foreseen what my first year on this council would have been like. And, you know, I think back to what Mr. Rogers said, which was, when times are scary, look for the helpers. And I, you know, I'm really glad to have this chance to reflect on how my fellow council members and the staff have helped me personally, an inordinate amount this year. There are no words to thank you all for everything that you've done to help me to become a productive council person and to, you know, to just, to just really, to just really support me in this role, and I thank all of you. You know, I, we've also seen that all around our town, you know, with, I mean, when, from when we were distributing meals in the summer, when we thought this was just going to be over any minute, to, you know, when, to when we had to shut down schools and people were setting up, setting up virtual, virtual meetings to read to each other's kids so that the rest of us could get some work done. And, you know, it just goes on and on, and I think that there's been a lot of sadness and a lot of fear this year, and, you know, I don't think that we should shy away from that. I think we should look that right in the face. I cried all day on Sunday. I told my kids not to come home for Thanksgiving, you know, and so, but, you know, and I think that it's been hard for everyone and that, you know, that we've gotten in a habit, which I think is great, of reaching out to each other, and I just wanted to say to everybody within the sound of my voice, you know, if you don't have anybody to reach out to, my phone number is right on the website, and, you know, give me a call, because I could talk all day about how scary and anxiety-producing this is. And I think that we've all, I'm really happy to have been on the council this year when we turned into such a town full of helpers. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rao, followed by Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, first of all, I echo everyone's sentiments, and I wish everyone a very happy new year. And if you've lost anyone during this pandemic, or you know someone who's suffering, or there's an empty seat at the table, we pray for all of you and all of your families. I just want to remind everyone, the Virtual Academy for elementary school students, the deadline is December 9th, and I want to congratulate Matt Calabria, Chair, for becoming the Chair, of the Wake County Commissioners, Vicki Adams, the Vice Chair, and congratulate Janika Thomas and Maria Servania. I just want to make a few comments on a positive note. In November of 2011, I began my tenure on the Town Council of Morrisville, and it's been a real honor to serve on this team, and I'm just proud of all of our achievements. I know we've got a lot of great stuff in the queue, and the staff and the council needs to be commended for their hard work. I truly have enjoyed working with our new council members, Councilmembers Robati and Fender, and happy anniversary to both of you. One year ago, you began your career here in Morrisville. But I just wanted to take a moment, and, you know, when I, I remember the day I was elected and I sworn in, and I think I was sitting right here, and you got the briefings, and I looked at all the achievements we've had in the decade, and I'm just going to name a few, just to, you know, Northwest Park, Church Street Park, where we've had world cricket play, like Team USA training, Crabtree Greenway, which we just opened, the Wake Competition Center, McCrimmon Extension, the Morrisville Grade Separation, the Morrisville Carpenter Road Widening Project, the Farmer's Market, the Wake County Library, Parkside Elementary, Wake Tech RTP. We adopted a UDL. We've adopted a strategic plan. We led efforts for an educational committee. And yes, to keep me quiet, we adopted a smart cities initiative and an open data portal, so I don't have as much to talk about anymore when we're in retreat, but we are doing it. And economic development, the kinds of successes we've had, not to name, Microsoft, Senios, we're home to 10 public companies, we saw The Stitch with the outlet mall. I could go on and on, but what got my hair standing up, because I actually went to see a lot of these places when I went on a 10-mile run one day to celebrate my 10 years, and I almost got emotional in the middle of my run because I realized that none of these things existed when I was elected in 2011, not one of those things that I mentioned. And it came through, these kinds of successes don't happen by accident. They happen because of the hard work of our staff, previous councils, each and every one of you, and if you're listening tonight, the engaged citizens who give us great ideas. So I wanted to just make those comments tonight because it's great, it's a great feeling to be a part of a winning team. And a winning team is one where we respect each other, we work the hardest, we're not going to agree on everything. And so I'm just going to end with one quote from one of my favorite songs that I've been listening to a lot, because I've been running a lot more now because of COVID, because I can't go to the gym, it's from the man of La Mancha, and I would actually, it's called "The Impossible Dream." And I think that our quest in Morrisville is to always reach the impossible dream and reach the unreachable star. And I just wanted to say that to the public because it's been a really long year, but if we could do that much in 10 years, I can't even imagine what we're going to do in the next few years. So I look forward to beginning a new decade in 2021, and I just want to thank the staff and everybody and wish everyone a happy new year. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, followed by Councilmember Garamella.
Oh, she's on mute.
We can't quite hear you, Councilmember.
That was a beautiful statement I just said, and I can't remember what it was. No, just.
Couldn't quite read your lips. If you could say it again.
Yes. I wanted to thank Councilmember Rao for trying to make a positive after a couple of our other council members almost brought everyone to tears. Thank you all for that. Happy holidays to everyone, to our Morrisville community, to our town staff, to the council, to, you know, the entire region. We've been working really hard this year with every obstacle thrown at us, and we've been very resilient, and we've been able to pivot and realign and keep moving forward. So I really am impressed and humbled at all of the support that everybody has given. I think each and every one of us has something to be grateful for, and each and every one of us has been affected by the pandemic. And personally, I have lost a cousin in the last couple weeks who had COVID, starting in April. She was not a fully healthy person in the beginning, but she had COVID for many months and then just passed away after several complications. I also had a friend who lost a grandparent. So my world has been reshaped just in a few months due to the pandemic. You know, we're all working with our day jobs and families and schools in different ways as well, so nobody is the same as they started out in January. But I know that we have learned a lot, and we've learned how to work together better. And so 2021 will have us take on even more challenges, and we will need a lot of patience because there's a lot of uncertainty about how we will undo the pandemic, how the vaccination schedule will go, how we will begin to reintroduce some habits, how some habits will never be the same. So I hope everybody has a safe holiday season, and I look forward to seeing each and every one of you in 2021.
Thank you. Very sorry about your cousin. Councilmember Garamella.
Thanks, DJ. My life becomes easy when everyone has said everything, but I would also like to echo saying happy holidays to everyone, and I would also like to thank our staff, you know. For us, it was kind of easy working in the tech industry, where you could work from home and get things done, but something the staff is not used to, like for this prolonged period of time, and especially Martha and Brandon and all the departmental heads trying to cope having, you know, coverage, you know, every ever-changing, the governor's rules, you know, how many can be there. I think we had to give them a big round of applause for, you know, keeping us informed, keeping us safe, and all the first responders and the police. It's like, you know, our life was much easier compared to their lives and all the essential services, people and the first, you know, who had to go. I know, you know, they did because they love their profession, and I want to reflect on all the positives that has happened, and I hope, you know, we have light in front of us. So stay safe, follow the guidelines, and this will be back behind us, and we can, in the long run, we can say, wow, we, you know, we only hear about the Spanish flu. Now we can say we wore during this COVID era, too. So that's all. Thanks, and happy holidays again.
Thank you. And as was mentioned, I think our entire council is congratulatory to the new Wake County Board of Commissioners. We've developed really good friendships with a lot of those members of that board, and our collaboration has really gotten better over the last few years, and we look forward to the future working with that board. At this time, Town Manager Page, did you have any comments from staff?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I would also acknowledge, I think it was already mentioned, that the governor did have a press conference today, and there will be more restrictions starting on Friday, including a curfew from 10:00 p.m. until 5:00 a.m. So please check out your news outlets to be compliant with everything that's going on. It was said that there is hope that further restrictions won't have to be enacted, but we need to get in front of this, and I think the governor is doing everything that they can and with their staff. So as long as we can do our part and take personal responsibility, I think we will get through this, as was mentioned by most of the council up here. So it's up to all of us to make this better. So on a positive note, we're going to take a 10-minute break and come back for our one work session. Right now, it is 7:42. I'll ask for us to come back at 7:53, please. 10-minute break. Thank you. We have one work session tonight, CIP prioritization and bond referendum pre-planning. Jeanne Hooks, our Director of Management Services, will facilitate. Ms. Hooks?
Good evening, everyone. Hope you can hear me.
You can.
Awesome. All right. I'm going to try to move through this quickly tonight. Tonight is really all about spending just a few moments with you to talk about our CIP and bond pre-planning strategy. So it's all about what you said earlier about setting those expectations for our future comprehensive discussions. These two items are going to be critically important and ongoing, so we'll be layering on information as we go. So staff's not looking for direction tonight. We're just looking to exchange information, more importantly, to lay out that path work so that we're all on the same page. So with that, it's about setting that stage for retreat discussion. That's when you're going to be doing the hard work with CIP prioritization and bond package identification, and these are the items that I'll just briefly cover for you So budget and CIP planning, they are meant to ideally run in parallel together. So it's important to reiterate that, not just for council, but for the community, to understand that while we're planning for our annual operating budget, it's important that we also, at the same time, start thinking about what those future capital needs are, because as we all know, capital facilities and buildings and infrastructure turns into potentially future operation needs, and we need to understand how they correlate and relate together and bring them back together around the March-April time period where we're aligning those critical, limited resources effectively to deliver results, not just operationally, but deliver on that long-range planning results and building tangible assets for our community. So Morrisville is guided by, if you didn't know, we have an adopted CIP policy. I will not go over the key elements, they're defined here on your page, and our process as shown here. I did provide you with a copy of the policy resolution. It's in abbreviated form so that you can kind of get a better feel for these items. CIP is influenced by many things, largely influenced by these other adopted plans. Placeholder policies are going to be one of those things that we have to work in, transportation plans, and more importantly, council's interest. And then, more importantly to that, really how council sees the community's interest shifting and changing over time. And our CIP policy is meant to be flexible enough to be able to accommodate and adapt these CIP priorities year over year. So I wanted to, you actually asked the last time, what were the CIP last survey, what the interest areas were. I believe Erin had shared you the link of where the survey that was done in 2017 was located on the web. If I need to share that again, I'll be glad to do that. But the top five results from the survey, for the general definition here, it really, it focused on the mobility or those infrastructure improvements, roadway, transit, public safety, and other forms of mobility that encompass really pedestrian improvements like sidewalks and greenways. And then, Council, you did actually do a prioritization, a pretty significant prioritization in 2019, and I wanted to make sure that you had, the nuts and bolts are really how that fell out. So here are what are the categories, and we did include in these categories these CIP placeholders that you are now working towards defining and creating policy to that will allow us to work through developing actual project concepts that could be part of the prioritization process. But as you did your paired comparison, you also indicated that public safety, transportation, land acquisition, and other public facilities and greenways were vitally important, top-ranking categories to consider. Now, you did this prioritization because we were at the time going towards a bond referendum in 2020, and you wanted to really get to what were the critical areas that a bond referendum ballot questions might focus on? Where would we be investing those dollars in terms of project categories? Your next step in that ranking, sorry, your next step in that ranking was the projects themselves. These were, at the time, those project concepts in the CIP that it was important for you to put in some order of priority. And as you see here, fire station, roadways, public facilities, and parks were part of the top five. Now, what we need to focus on as we move towards retreat is understanding, some things may have shifted a little bit. So staff has recognized that with the placeholder policy development and trying to move those forward in creating project concepts, that's something that we need to translate and creates an opportunity for us to build things in here that you would like to see. The other part of the conversation that staff has picked up on is your interest is significantly stronger in some of these projects that you will see actually ranked much lower, but your interest in your recent conversations for sidewalk segments, for example, maybe even a dog park, they have indicated that we might need to take another look at this prioritization, especially since we're going into, we delayed our bond referendum from 2020 to now 2021. Especially because we're working towards a 2021 bond referendum, we need to retest really what are your priorities. So we make sure that we align this investment opportunity through a voter-approved GTO bond and align the right types of projects to that, and then, of course, obviously adopt your CIP for your five-year period. So the following items are the actual projects as they stand right now. Now, that being said, there's going to be some work that staff's going to go through to update these and bring them more current, and then to transition some of these placeholder items into what are project concepts. So I'm not going to go over them piece by piece. The actual current active capital projects that are considered active, in progress, they're nearing completion or requiring some level of cash flow. You actually heard about these from the Assistant Town Manager, Brandon Zudaba. He actually provided you with a capital update. So I'm not going to go into these into much detail, but to emphasize, Morrisville's doing a lot. But to emphasize, Morrisville's doing a lot of work. We're investing our dollars. That's what that represents to us. What I do want you to focus on are the next two slides. As we move into prioritizing our capital investment program and looking, more importantly, to identifying bond projects or bond categories, these next two areas are where we're probably going to pull or, and pick, what are those that we want to dedicate to this next bond referendum and plan even for those future cycles of bond referendums. So the current capital projects in development, this really means that the town has decided that they're important enough to advance or commit some funding towards creating some shovel-ready projects through land acquisition, through funding of design. It means they're at some stage of development. So those are critically important as we move into those discussions. It makes them easier to start looking for and planning for those funding instruments like a bond referendum. The other items are the items that don't have funding yet. These are your existing capital project concepts that are currently in your CIP. Again, I'm not going to go over all of these, but I want to point out and recognize that there are some, such as our fire stations, that influences have caused them to shift and change in order to meet the needs of responsiveness. And we need to update that information. Those are really the ones that you have really committed monies towards to put in the process of developing them because you felt they were so important. So things like these would need to be changed or staff would recommend they need to be removed. So those will be some things that we're going to do as we proceed into this process. But both of these items, both of these categories of projects are the projects to look at as we proceed into those conversations for prioritization and for bond referendum project identification. And staff will be working to update that information. So other things that we need to consider to give you the full picture before you get to these critical steps is really the project concepts in development. And this is where staff is going to be focusing a lot of its work between now and your retreat is to build these elements for you so that you have some context. So if you refer to your CIP narrative summary, staff actually works pretty hard to build some context to what is, what does this vision or interest really mean? What might it look like? What are some alternatives? And what would be some general cost associated with that? So we try to give you a picture, but in order to do that, it does take time. So when we actually have gone through adopting policies for these placeholders, it will be important for staff to start trying to transform those as best we can or as appropriately as we can into some project concepts so that it can be a part of your consideration. The one or actually the two that probably rise to the service is really about land acquisition and land acquisition really related to maybe town center and then your future sidewalk gap projects, for example. But all of these items are things that staff is going to work on. So here's where we're at. What's the pathway forward? What can we expect so we make sure that everybody's in alignment of where we're headed? So looking ahead, staff is actually going to be working now through into January in completing the updates and looking for new requests from staff and from council, really. What's missing? What projects need to be updated? And then we're going to proceed into this process according to your policy, your CIP policy, of staff actually providing you with some kind of ranking information of these project concepts. We're going to give you information of the urgency of the need, the order of magnitude, what are the opportunities and influences that might cause something to be more important than another. We're going to help you understand that kind of information. So when you get to retreat, you get to look at this information and then you can formulate really what you feel is important and provide guidance to staff so that we can build this five-year CIP plan and really take from that and exercise that tool for a bond referendum to really leverage that kind of debt appropriately for the projects that fit best in that opportunity. And then in February, we're going to be identifying that formally through the logistics process of a bond referendum. And staff will walk you through that with bond counsel. And then we're going to get to March, really through June, when you adopt your budget and your capital budget and CIP. It's going to be about aligning those resources to the priorities. And I would say that staff is really here to help you through that process. And I would remind council, as we go through these important conversations, remember to keep a lookout and focus on the big pictures of what you value as a collective entity to determine that. What you, as a collective entity, your interests are, your shared interests, and how you want to invest them. If you help us understand that, staff can do the work to lay out the ways and the means through your CIP tool to leverage those funding sources like a bond referendum appropriately to get those tangible assets on the ground in the future. So that's where we're headed and that's what we hope to accomplish in the future. And I will stop there because I could probably talk on my soapbox a lot longer. But this is what we wanted to lay the groundwork for you, is really this particular page right here and build that level of understanding and feed you some of this information of what those projects look like right now and how we're going to move forward to update them. And we'll share and communicate that as we go. So I will say thank you for the time and I will stop there.
Thank you very much and thank you to Assistant Manager Zudma for the presentation. We got a little bit of an echo. Mute yourself, Jeanie.
Sure.
Thank you very much. And the pathway forward looks really good and solid. So we really appreciate all the work that staff's going to do and has already done. I'd like to recognize Mayor Protem Johnson.
So I just have a quick question, comment question. But before I do that, Jeanie, I want to say thank you for the decorations here in the council chambers. You did an excellent job once again this year and I really appreciate it. It is important to find joy in all kinds of things these days. And this is very festive and joyful, so I appreciate it very much. I think we all do, those of us that are in the room. So thank you. So you just said something really important. You talked about that we need to focus on big picture and what we value. So I want to talk about that for a minute. So like, an example of something we value, if you don't have examples, would, or give us some examples. I'm asking you for some examples, but would one example be, you know, we value public safety and the safety of our citizens? Or, you know, we value a really safe working environment for our employees? Those would be really big-picture values. So do you have some examples you want to leave with us while we end this topic in this year?
Yes. So when you're talking CIP, the values really, according to your policy, really boil down to your categories. So public safety is an area of interest. Transportation is an area of interest. And when you look at just even your citizen survey, they specifically said mobility was very important for them to get around. But they said mobility in a couple of ways. They said it not only in roadways and transportation transit, but they also said it in really their pedestrian movements, their alternative ways to be connected. And that's said a lot. And then, of course, your public safety. So if you focused on really your high level of being able to tell us what are your areas of interest, getting to really defining what projects fit best with that becomes a little bit easier. Because then you know, as you go into ranking these priorities, if you choose to shift, for example, sidewalks up, you know it's because you feel like you need to align to mobility, pedestrian improvements because not only your citizenry have said that, but you, as council, have said that greenways improvement is a very important area to focus on. Hopefully that answers your question.
Okay. Do any other councilmembers have any questions or comments? This is a really good foundational start, leading us up to the retreat. Yeah. So looking forward to getting some really good work done at the retreat. And before, I entertain a motion. Well, first, does staff have anything for the good of the order before we adjourn? Nope. Okay. On behalf of everybody, happy holidays. We really appreciate everything that the staff has done for the year, the persistence and everything that our sacrifices that our residents have done and coming and supporting each other in so many different ways. We really appreciate the kindness and the generosity of our community. We're proud to be part of it. I now entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I have a motion from Councilmember Ralph, a second from Councilmember Fender. Town Clerk Smith, if you could do the final roll call vote of the year.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Ralph?
Aye.
Councilmember Robody?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn. Passage unanimously.
It is 8:12. We are adjourned. Happy holidays and Happy New Year.